That was fifty-six, two ninety-seven.
About last week we, I don't remember exactly how much it was, we had an error in our, uh, wood keeping a little bit and we found it and I had to do that to make sure of what Jake's got.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You're welcome. We could use about a ton now.
Get more, I need people.
You can't paint it on the other one?
No, I just had extra ones. Morning.
I think it's a first year, I don't think I've bought a pencil. John's given me a bunch of old ones that he had. But by running selection, I always bought my own pens and just put my name on them.
Sure.
But, uh...
But you're not doing that right now. Well, what's our options for next week, do you think, Paul?
Uh, Circuit clerk's probably will have about forty thousand. I just, I hope we get something in, that's the only thing I can say.
Is the state still behind on the sales tax and stuff like that?
Well, sales tax they're up on, but the income tax and it's the biggest one that's behind.
Income tax, we're still, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars back on that yet?
We had that figure here a while back, I forgot, it's in that neighborhood.
Something like that. I have to make the phone call too, we can't get some of that.
They, they usually won't give us the one unless they give it to every county and they won't... I was hoping it would be more regular.
I understand there's a lot of people coming in paying both, uh...
Installments.
Installments on their taxes and stuff, I don't know, they don't realize it might help in the long run, but it don't help immediately, you know?
Well, it helps me out because I don't have to deal with it.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, a lot of people think that all that money we get to keep and, uh, of course I appreciate anybody paying, most they pay in the whole thing. And we get a lot of people mail it in too, so...
Thank you for giving us a full report this week.
It's alright, got everything pretty well caught up over there on that part of it. If we just get through this next couple of months. Anybody got anything else? I'll get over and help the girls correct some taxes.
Um, that's it, thank you.
Alright, see ya.
Bill, what can we do for you? I see it not on the agenda, but, uh...
You know, I didn't know this book was gonna come in today, uh, Friday and I just wanted to drop this off.
You're welcome.
Just a second?
Yeah, go ahead and say what you say, there's nobody here right now.
Alright.
Good morning, Gerald.
We got a very loud agenda.
I, you know, I'm sorry, last time I came in, I just, you were awful quiet and I figured, thought you were in heavy thought, I didn't speak to you.
I have been in heavy thought.
I'm just sorry, I didn't speak to you, I wasn't, I wasn't, wasn't, not ignoring you, I just, you look at me like you're just too darn busy for me to do talk.
Well, I understand.
Just want to touch base with you guys, uh, we've got your pre-renewal ready extra early because we know, uh, you've got some decisions to make and those are decisions I can't make. So, I've got, got a broken tent for John real easy, we can go through and look at all your, all your buildings and all your cars and all your values. We want to make sure that we're, we're, we're pretty sure it's accurate when the data stays on top of it on a weekly basis, but we're even being, we can't make mistakes, but we hope we don't. Uh, there's a letter here telling you what we need, we're gonna have to have a, a two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget, which you probably haven't got that put together yet, I understand that. Uh, it's pretty, pretty self-explanatory, it goes about property, goes about general, I building, goes about autos and somebody has to sign off on it, I don't know who signs off, who's been signing off on it.
Chairman.
Okay, okay, we want to give it to you, you can read that and, uh, if we can help you, John, when you start with putting all that together, we'll help you. Now, on the work comp, uh, we based, uh, our renewal on last year's audited premium. If that's gonna change, that's where you're gonna be able to save some money.
Okay, well then, uh, did you look at the draft we had, the two thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
We had the two thousand eleven draft.
Right, exactly, yeah, we have the draft.
Okay.
But, but, but you can go, it's got it by, by department and by code, so you can go and check the numbers if, if, say, one department's gonna be down on payroll.
I think if we make a disbursement that we're gonna have, we're gonna be good to go for a full payment. If, if not, we can do it three quarters.
Oh, yeah, you can do it like you did last year, not, not a problem.
Is the renewal over, higher?
We don't know until we get all the information, it's probably gonna come in probably pretty close to last year. And that, and we're pretty hopeful on that, uh, uh, we've, we've obviously got, uh, Southern Illinois has been inundated with lightning and houses, I haven't heard back from over here, I saw no news, it's good news, I guess it's all going, going alright?
I, I suppose, well, Ted will probably be in today, you can ask him if we're, we're...
You know, we just are dumbfounded, why does that just keep happening?
Because there's so much electronics concentrated into one building and they got that lightning rod up there. It happens all the time.
Is there something we can do to prevent that?
You know, the guy that does installation probably can, you can probably talk to him about, uh, uh, lightning suppression systems that, all the time advancing that. Uh, they make a box that you hook to, that stuff is supposed to take the load, but sometimes when you get a direct hit, it just doesn't work. Uh, we pay those all the time, it's like that substation down there, you know, whenever them things get hit. We had one, what, about twenty years ago, we had one that cost three hundred and ninety thousand dollars to fix that substation. Lightning does the strange, we had a lot of lightning this week, boys.
A lot, no stopping it, I mean.
I was standing on for a porch saying, saying, thinking about how many people gonna call me at home. And, you know, knock on wood, uh, not very many, but, uh, did have a few pretty serious stuff. But, uh, like I say, I'll be glad to come back and meet with you and do whatever's necessary, but, uh, I'll help you try to just keep it as close as we can. We gotta save money.
Yeah.
But...
Well, we appreciate it.
But if the property, you know, we keep adding vehicles and we keep adding people and payroll keeps going up, there's, there's much to do about that. But, uh, times, times tough. Anything else you guys need?
How soon do you need a job or get to?
Yeah, next, uh, I'll have, I'll cover first. We'd, we'd like to get it in sooner than that, sooner we get it in, sometimes the better negotiations we have with them. Because all the renewals come in at the same time, so if they have, I don't know, if they have a bunch all at once, if you're getting first, then we have opportunity to talk to them earlier. And, uh, sometimes we got, you know, if you've got six hundred things to do and you're in the middle.
Or at the bottom.
Or at the bottom, uh, you know, they can pull, you know, that is, but if you come in, if you come in first and you get a chance to, well, I just got started, oh, yeah, let's talk about it. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming in, we'll get you something fast.
Alright, alright, any need, sir.
Have a good day.
Yep.
John, you look like you got homework to do, you really need it, huh? You get it all, that fellow, okay, I'll put it up.
Alright, here is, City of Centroya sent this to Billy McDaniel.
Yeah, looks like I've got the same thing here.
Okay, here is a letter, let you read it, they're just requesting a letter, be faxed to them, supporting. If y'all wanna sign that, and I'll get that faxed too.
On behalf of the community of Massach County, we support and encourage the efforts of our legislators in working as a bipartisan coalition for Southern Illinois. The economic vitality of our region requires a unified effort in sending a message that we can respectfully request our voice to be heard and respected on the policymaking decisions that impact our region.
We'll send that and I'll get it faxed.
Gerald, come back in, we'll make motions on that. Did the city receive the same thing, did they?
Well, yeah, this is a city that looks like it's the exact same thing that you got. There it is, yeah, it's the exact same thing. I guess Centroya must be losing the correctional facility up there or something.
I thought they backed off there.
Well, it came with a, it came with one.
Well...
We'll do that too, or do our own?
Well, actually, you do it, I, we'd have had it done on your letterhead, it's verbatim.
Okay, you just wrote it over, yeah, okay.
Plus they're requesting it be on your letterhead.
Gerald, here, we have a, a letter requesting our support and he can give a quick read over, I just read it and we'll make a motion to accept that. He just said the city of Metropolis did the same thing. Do you need any of this information?
I'll hang on to it, I'll, I'll get that faxed.
I'll leave it with that, I thought you might want them numbers.
Just put it all on, yeah. Yeah, I'll let that turn off.
I tell, like, make a motion, we send that letter and that respect, the glitz. Jason, you in favor?
Yeah.
Oh, favorite eye, yeah.
Eye.
There you are. How's Mr. Glasgow today?
He's doing alright, I hope. He was.
Shattered, you got a leg.
How's it going, Larry?
Alright again.
Jason?
Let me just have it.
What can we do for you today, eh? You got a pile of bills or something for us, or what?
Nope, no, not till next week. Not till next week.
Was your ears burning the other day? No more than normal? Uh, I, I think the people of Joppa are still wanting you to come down and clean those gutters out down there and they hadn't seen your face down there lately, they just wanted to know if you was okay.
Oh, we're good.
Okay.
We'll be down that way in a week or so.
They can look forward to seeing you pretty soon, maybe, I'm surprised all this rain, they haven't got washed out on their own. They didn't get washed out in the last couple thunderstorms.
You find beach balls and...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everything else and all the trash they throw out.
But it was brought to my attention the other day that you hadn't came down to visit them yet.
Yeah, we gotta go down to their land.
Now that you are down there, I understand, doing some oil and chipping in the area anyway, aren't you?
No, we're not in there yet, we're gonna be.
Okay, you're gonna be, I know, okay.
Next week or so, Gerald will talk about it. When we got back, we, uh, we didn't do any oil and chipping last week, we took advantage of the rains and tried to grade some roads and then they all washed out Thursday and Friday. So, we did some more grading yesterday and we got back on, we didn't do any oil and chip last week, but we are, we're back at it, so...
Uh, Larry's there on T Hill Road. You know, where that curve, not the real long curve just north of Mermet, but that little one there, where that little, uh, there's a built, farm building there, I just saw it on the flat. Uh, I'm with the north, north of that, I believe that, uh, road is paved on. Did you notice that?
Cracked there.
What is shoulder, is it just shaven out or what?
Especially in this dry weather, what we talked about last week.
You, you put that in there, didn't you, for shoulder?
No, we didn't, we didn't mess with that, that's been there for years.
Okay.
And after we put the, uh, asphalt on it, that started cracking and showing up. And of course, with this dry weather, it's gotten worse and, uh...
What I wonder is go up there, probably feel like crack up with asphalt.
Yeah. We'll get a chance, so the water won't get down anywhere. Yeah, I've been washing it, it...
I just noticed it, I've, I've, I've noticed it.
It's been going on for, I've been washing it for a couple of years now.
How wide a crack is it?
Probably about that wide, not, not an inch, but it's quarter and a half inch right now.
You couldn't get asphalt down in that, could you, and oil maybe?
That's what I'm talking about.
Hot oil?
Hot oil.
Hot oil?
Yeah. We've done that before, hey, we had a place up here, uh, just out the round, I did the same thing. And there's, you can feel a, a depression, now where's it gone? Uh, you know, there's no indication that you're seeing any movement anywhere, but it's, it's moving.
You know that, uh, the pavement on forty-five from Mermet to Carnet Road that I travel about every day?
It's...
Right there north that bridge on Dry, uh, is that, uh, the quarry there?
Dry Ridge? Well, that's on Tucker, Tucker Ditch.
Okay.
On the north, north side of Tucker Ditch up there by, uh, used to be Adley, Schmidt's driveway.
Yeah, that's just exactly.
And I figure it's the same thing, it's that old... Dried out so much up there that she's... And if we get a few rains...
Tear it up and just...
She may fill back up, raise back up and, uh, yeah, I've noticed that for biggest part of the summer up there, I don't know what it is.
Uh, rocks is required in here, like for your, one night they built a new road for them.
Hey, it depends on your load, load factors, how much. It depends on the number and the size of your loads. Most...
All of maybe thousand, I guess.
Most heavier, uh, county highways, I, I've heard some new county highways, they're putting a foot of rock and then putting forty-six inches of either asphalt or concrete on top of that. On most of our bridge projects, uh, you know, they're live traffic, we aim at, uh, probably get eight inches of rock in there.
The approach and all, they're...
Yeah, like our little township roads and lighter roads. But I was involved a few years ago, you know, we haven't built any new roads in twenty-five years. But another county that had, and I think they were, that, I remember them saying that they had aimed at a foot of aggregate and then, you know, four, six, eight, whatever kind of surface, depends on what they were putting on, uh, on top of that. As a subbase, you know? And that was a pretty busy county highway, they were, you know, in building for some pretty good truck traffic, I think it was an industrial area or something like that, they were... So, you're, you know, it's, uh, there's some formulas that you go through and it's based on traffic and the type of vehicle, the weight. You know, I think, uh, one truck is equivalent to about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty cars.
Oh, really?
One.
I can see that.
That's for wear and tear, you know, that's based on the formula.
Fifty-seven highway, they're interstate, they're working on it constantly, they've always got one lane, so then...
Recognize when they were designed over, well, I'd say the interstate system started over fifty years ago.
Yeah, species, I guess.
Who would envision?
That's right.
The truck traffic that we've got today, it just won't be good.
Envision, you know, they've been carved, that, that road up there, Logan.
And, uh, they, they have told us for years that between Mount Vernon, in other words, sixty-four and twenty-four is the busiest section of Interstate fifty-seven, south of Cankey. In other words, you've gotta get between Cankey and Chicago on fifty-seven before you get the amount of traffic that you find between sixty-four and twenty-four.
Sixty-four, twenty-four, yeah, I can, I can see that, yeah.
And I can, I can tell you the difference in the traffic that I have seen on twenty-four in the last twenty-five years is just tremendous. I'd say it's, uh, at least four times greater now than it was twenty-five years ago. You know, I, I remember twenty-five years ago, uh, of course I was traveling back and forth and I would get see a, a truck every now and then and half the traffic now is, is trucks and you don't ever get out of sight of one hardly. Yeah, it's, the traffic is...
We talked here a while back about Gurley Road, just this side of Devers Road, did you ever do a count on that? You talked about doing a vehicle count on that.
There, there is a count, the state does.
When was the last time that count was made?
Oh, okay, I have to check the, uh, traffic map, but I'm thinking it's a couple of years ago.
That would be prior to the new road down there by the new church?
How many years after that?
Is it after that, okay. Trying to say, if it was prior to that, since then, we probably have maybe a year of the state, why would the state do that? I thought that's strictly county road, they count it for you?
They do it all over, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know they count county roads.
Every, uh, every five years, they will count every road, well, take that back. A major portion of roads never counted, the, the busier roads at least, they'll count, the, the lower volume roads they don't.
You go to you as county engineers of...
They will ask me, do you have any particular roads different than what we did the last one? And they usually give me a copy of that report. Uh, you know, the, uh, real light volume, road district roads, they don't necessarily count those. Uh, sometimes I'll come up, well, we've got an issue here, I've had some complaints or some concerns, uh, could you count this road for me? And they're, they're quite accommodating. Used to, uh, they'd say, we need to count the county and we did it. They would bring the counters to us and we did it.
I just assumed the county.
Uh, but starting many years ago, uh, they started doing it and since then, they, they've done it. So, they've done it since about the mid, about the mid nineties. They, they've just done it. They contact me and say, uh, we're gonna be counting your county, if you've got anything in particular, and if I do, I tell them, and if I don't...
You get a report of it?
They usually, usually give me a report, I think I got one last time, although if I didn't, see, I can get on, I can, if I can get on the computer, if you know how to get to it, on the IDOT's webpage and find it. Current, the mo, the most up to date traffic match. But they count the, the state highways in different locations and the interstate and all of our, all of our county highways get counted and a lot of the road district roads get counted. Not all of them, but, but a lot of them.
No, in the past, I just used to call IDOT there in Carnet, you just give them the intersection and they'll look it up for you and give you the traffic count or nothing, information to... That's what I've done, like, if you want to know the corner, tenth and fair, you sell them and they'll know you.
I can tell you how to get online to it.
Yeah, that's what I just, just use, call them. Yeah, you can look online to that.
You can, anybody, I, I think anybody can, I'm pretty sure anybody can, get on IDOT's webpage and you've got, it's not out, you've gotta look under maps, I think is where it's at. Every time I, and see, I have to have a traffic count for every project that we come up with, I gotta get traffic counts and of course, I just go to the, the webpage and, uh, look it up and I've got time to do it, a little hunting and pecking and searching every time and figure out how to get there and so on and so forth, but it's getting easier.
Well, I still have concerned people out there on that traffic and, yeah, anybody would know it's definitely picked up that they put that new road in and everything. I went out there, I think it was a week or two ago, I hadn't talked to you about it. I just stood there at Miss Gurley's house one day and watched the traffic go back and by, there's a tremendous amount of traffic go through there. It surprises me.
It's increased like a half on all roads and of course, it's heavier during school time, the school kids.
That's true, yeah, they heading back Fort Shawnee there and I watched that.
Yeah, that is, that's another one.
Yeah, they go that way and then a lot of them turn, go toward Purdue, so they, they eliminate Metropolis that way a lot of times.
I haven't looked at it since they put the new Thai Road to Metropolis Street in to see if it's really changed that much, but it may have changed some.
You drive that road quite with yourself, don't you?
Yes.
We use it. We lay church on Sunday, go down, go to the rolling home. And then usually go out the other way to go home, but that's the shortest way from church to the nursing home to see my father-in-law, so...
Exactly, exactly.
You know the church on North Avenue, in the Christian?
Yeah, that church, yeah. I don't have anything else right now.
Okay, I'm good.
Be careful out there.
Talked to contractor, he, uh, maybe in a couple of weeks, he's still trying to get through the red tape.
Oh, that'll be good, brother.
Yeah, it will be for me. Yeah, hey, y'all have a good one.
Take care of it out there.
It's on you, Ted.
You're black and blue.
Yeah, this is blue.
I'm blue.
Nice.
You got a black. Handing their stuff out like it's Christmas. You just got all kinds of good stuff. Need to pay attention to these stickers too, or what?
Uh, no, they just sell...
Oh, they just sell, okay.
The only one that we really need to get paid this week is the one that I highlighted. That's the last bill that's outstanding on that grant that we got for cars, I can't close the grant yet until that one bill's paid.
Good thing it's not more than that, we're gonna run real tight this week. Perhaps next week we'll have abundant money, but right now, we're running really, really tight. If you gotta have it for a grant, I'm sure we can possibly do this one. We'll highlight that one for sure. You gotta have, finish up the grant, huh?
Yeah.
Mr. Howard's in here, we were talking, what's, any information on the repair?
It's true, trying to, Jackson Purchase has brought over equipment to keep us running, but we're still having trouble with the reception from the cars to the town, they can't figure out what the problem is, they have to bring over something else today, the repeater and the duplex. They see best, so they don't wanna give us a quote until they know exactly what all is going on. This place, it's gonna be more than a hundred thousand dollars. There's about sixty-five thousand dollars of that, one way. And our, our rails alone probably would be sixty-five hundred. This is trying to act as every one of those.
Bill said it's just, I'm not sure these people can look at it, but there's some type of things that you can try to fit in, which maybe we already have and try to begin, you know, the damage being done to the most expensive stuff. He mentioned another box.
Some kind of box, he's talking about?
It's designed, some of them, sometimes the voltage is into that box, which is less expensive. Something, you know, and then he mentioned something about a, what was the other one? And they, no, they, uh, something, somehow breaking the line or something.
Yeah, it, it looks like a paper, but I mentioned, right?
Well, I think Bill says he has other ones that have the same problems, maybe other agencies are still trying to, they need to try to solve the problems, so I don't know if you wanna talk to Bill and have anybody else, some other ideas and candidates, which is how they...
There's three ways electricity gets in, Bill, one's the power line, one's the home line, one's the radio, this last one. And I think they said there's fifteen at the ground lights, off the, around the ground, there's also a ground wire next to the antenna up there, this was taken away from the antenna. They're doing just about everything they can do, but we just had a lot of bad lighting.
He didn't seem upset at it, he said it's more used to lighting, so...
Isn't that, it's a good feature.
It's the ampers all the time.
You're still worrying off the city, I understand?
No, the ci, the city's dispatching certain frequencies for us, when we still operate a hard, but there's some that we can't transmit. Well, I, we're cold, we can't try to work it, but of course, because our stuff's running up, we still dispatch our cars, it's just the reception we're having is terrible, we get five miles uptown, we can't hear a car. Most of the guys are operating on cell phones.
I'll look at that resolve quickly.
So, they can deal with that, so, that's something else. But that was my biggest concern, if we get this one bill paid and get a grant closed, I can start planning for another.
I look like your total, grant total's fifty-four thousand seven hundred.
We'll try to knock that out, it looks like your total grant total is fifty-four thousand seven hundred, but, uh, yeah, we'll try to knock off that one that you gotta have on the grant. I was just looking at on the grant, your, your total payoff on the grant was like fourteen hundred dollars or something like that, correct? It's what you owed out of the grant was fourteen hundred, I think.
Yeah, it was bucks.
Well, no, that's just a balance, I'm looking at.
Sixty grand dollars.
That's just a balance, well, what I'm saying is, that's off the two new cars, you just got those two new black and whites, or that's the other ones you got?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the black and whites I bought out of police vehicle, so I'll just get off the payment.
That's what you did, yeah, or perhaps, now that you got a couple of extra vehicles, maybe you can, uh, sell a couple and help reimburse some of that, I know you're gonna keep a couple for backups when you're, you're down, but if you have any extras, you could possibly sell them, you know, reimburse a little of that. Everything else running good?
Right there.
Full capacity?
Forty, we're at capacity today, forty-two. We're over fourteen out of county inmates.
Making a little money off that, yeah, but to them bad boys out there, we still have room for them, they don't straight enough, we'll accommodate them.
Playing macro physics, actually, more for.
I see, uh, you've been staying busy again out there. You definitely got job security out there, don't you? There's a lot to be, uh, a lot to be done.
That's all I got.
Alright, thank you. Drink water.